Buenos dias, Hafedee. The Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning is calling this public hearing to order. Today is Friday, November 8th, 2024, and the time is now 1:01 PM. In compliance with the open government law, notices of today's hearing were broadcasted on KUAM, provided via email to senators, stakeholders, and the local media, and posted to the government of Guam Public Notices website. On Thursday, October 31st, the five-day notice, and Wednesday, November 6th, for the 48-hour notice. The purpose of today's public hearing and confirmation hearing is to hear testimony on the following. Bill 365-37COR, sponsored by myself, and an act to add a new Chapter 17 to Part 2, Division 1, Title 18 Guam Code annotated relative to establishing the Guam Uniform Limited Cooperative Association Act. The second item is Bill Number 370-37COR, sponsored by myself. It's an act to amend Sections 103, 103B, and 103, 103F. Chapter 103, Title 11 Guam Code annotated relative to empowering the Banking and Insurance Board to better serve the community needs through reforming the Banking and Insurance Board's composition and requiring monthly board meetings. The third item is to receive testimony in the executive appointment of Candy C Okahama to serve as a member on the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board. The rules of conduct are as follows. The ordered testimony shall be heard starting with government agencies, followed by those on Zoom, and then followed by those who have come here to testify. Written testimonies or any handouts are to be submitted to the committee staff immediately so copies can be made available for dissemination and to ensure its inclusion in the bill's committee report. For record-keeping purposes, please state your name, organization, business, and title position upon giving your testimony. Senators will be given opportunity at the end of each panel to ask questions. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to character or motive of any senator or individual testifying is not permitted. Now to begin our agenda, to hear testimony for Bill Number 365-37COR, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, as an act to add a new Chapter 17 to Part 2, Division 1, Title 18 Guam Code annotated relative to establishing the Guam Uniform Limited Cooperative Association Act. So I'd like to give some opening remarks. So Bill 365-37 aims to establish the limited cooperative association within Guam law. Limited cooperative association is an alternative type of business model that is an autonomous, unincorporated association of persons united to meet their mutual interests through a jointly-owned enterprise primarily controlled by those persons for any lawful purpose, which permits combining ownership, financing, and receipt of benefits by members. It is a type of cooperative that includes patron and investor members. Any LCA or limited cooperative association is subject to filing fees, taxes, interests, and penalties imposed by Department of Revenue and Taxation. Traditionally, cooperatives offer an alternative way of doing business, which is associated with equitable distribution of profits and losses, democratic and egalitarian control by members, who are often the workers. Those who establish cooperatives are attracted to these principles that combine the social welfare of the workers and a public benefit such as environmental protections with financial sustainability. Multiple academic studies have found that cooperatives with worker governance and ownership are as profitable as or more profitable than ordinary firms. Researchers note that in co-ops, incentives are better aligned. People benefit directly when their co-op succeeds, and so they are more committed. They also find that democratic governance empowers workers to suggest improvements that increases their satisfaction and can lead to more profitability. With the evolution of cooperatives, limited cooperative association was developed to provide access to funding through investors. Bill 365-37 was created using the Uniform Limited Cooperative Association Model Code that is organized in 18 articles in this bill, and that specifies essential aspects of governance of an LCA from its creation and amendment of the Articles of Incorporation, Bylaws, filing, naming, registering, access to information by members, reporting, public notices of annual and special meetings, membership, members' interest, transferability of interest, allocation of profits and losses, directors and officers quorum, dissolution, mergers and dissociation if applicable. In the development of Bill 365-37, changes were made to the model code to increase safeguards and accountability. Some of the changes include it ensures patron members retain at least 80% of the total voting power should the cooperative include investor members. It clarifies the definition of foreign cooperatives, one that is organized in a jurisdiction outside of Guam but within the United States. It prohibits dual capacity and creates a clear division between investor and patron members. It requires documents to be filed before filing with DRT. It requires notices and agenda of annual and special meetings to members. It does not allow the delegation of amendments to Board of Directors, amendments by the Board of Directors. It requires a minimum of two patron members in its formation. It prohibits action without a meeting. It requires foreign cooperative to be registered with DRT, amongst other safeguards. In looking at the success story of Mondragon Cooperative in Spain, what started as a workers' cooperative for kerosene heaters has grown to a conglomerate of diverse cooperatives that produce bicycles, elevators, jet engines, rockets, turbines, R&amp;D centers, a grocery chain, and schools that has transformed a once impoverished region. Bill 365-37 aims to add an alternative business model that is based on equitable distribution and democratic control by its members and to become financially sustainable, which has the potential to develop a sustainable economy on Guam with improved livelihoods of our people. I want to thank those in attendance here and Tewid Merisbug for bringing this concept to my attention and looking forward to the ensuing dialogue on this important measure. So invitation letters were sent out to Department of Revenue and Taxation, to Guam Economic Development Authority, Guam Waterworks Authority, as well as Guam Power Authority. A fiscal note was received on November 4th, and it states, "The enactment of this bill does not appear to pose immediate fiscal impact to any government of Guam fund. However, absent information from DRT, the Bureau is unable to determine the potential long-term fiscal impact of this legislation." So we did receive testimony by Gida in support of the bill, and then DRT is going to submit testimony before the end of the public hearing period. We also received testimony and support by attorney Jeffrey Pote, a Pote Law Firm. And we have, we're now going to move into the testimony period of our public hearing. So we don't have any government agencies here that are represented, but we would like to start with those on Zoom because I believe it's pretty late over in the East Coast. We're going to start with the East Coast and work our way towards Guam. So at this time, I'd like to recognize Mo Mancling. She is Policy Director of the U.S. Federation of Workers Cooperative, and we would like to then recognize her for her testimony. Good evening, I believe it's good evening to you, and thank you for being here to provide testimony. Mo, you are recognized.
Thank you so much. Hafedee to Honorable Senators Sabina Flores Perez and the Committee on Environment, Revenue, and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, and Research and Planning. Thank you all so much for making the space for this important issue. So on behalf of the U.S. Federation of Worker Co-ops, I want to support the establishment of the Guam Uniform Limited Co-op Association Act. I believe this bill will strengthen Guam's small business community, empower workers, and cultivate an equitable economy by increasing awareness of and pathways to worker ownership, just like similar bills have done in other states like Colorado and Illinois, and we'll hear a little bit from Colorado later today. So I'm the Policy Director at the Federation, so we are the National Association of Worker Co-ops in Democratic workplaces in the U.S., which means we have a close view of the challenges and successes of our worker-owned business members and are attuned to the needs of the field, including Pacific Nation Equities. Worker co-ops are increasingly recognized across the country as a solution to economic challenges. They strengthen companies, they reward workers, they prevent job loss, as in the case of convert to businesses. The Guam LCA would allow worker owners to control their businesses and also to accept investments without undermining their control, which makes businesses more viable. So it's an increasingly used model across the country, kind of an update to previous forms. Because worker co-ops are democratically owned by their stakeholders, they play a critical role across economies and have many benefits, including higher pay, higher pay than industry average, as well as patronage to each worker each year, better benefits that consider and are responsive to immediate household needs, an emphasis on worker voice that ensures that people are able to provide meaningful input on their working conditions, instability, particularly in lower-wage working-class industries that are typically really insecure. So, you know, both evidence and experience suggests that worker ownership is a particularly powerful wealth-building opportunity, and we're really pleased to see that Guam is taking steps to harness that power, worker ownership. I urge the committee to support the LCA. We, and I specifically, am at your service to provide further insight and examples if needed, and if you have any questions regarding our position, please just reach out anytime to me. Thank you so much for the time and for making this a virtual space for us.
Thank you so much, Mo. I'm glad to finally meet you, and I appreciate you staying up late, providing this testimony, and being a resource to our community. So yeah, I'm sure we will have questions later, but if you can stay up a little bit more, if not, then we would definitely reach out to you. Okay, next on the list, we're moving westward. We have Linda Phillips, Senior Counsel for the Jason Wiener Public Benefit Corporation. I don't know if I got that correct, but yeah, thank you again for staying up late, and you're recognized for your testimony. Attorney Phillips.
Thank you very much for having me. I'm quite honored. My name is Linda Phillips, Senior of Counsel with Jason Wiener PC. I am an attorney, working with co-ops for quite a long time, since 1991, and I was lucky enough, my old partner, James Dean, James B. Dean, also known as Jim, was one of the co-authors of the Uniform Limited Cooperative Association Act, which is a really long name, so we always, we always call it the LCA instead of the UL LCAA whatever. And we're delighted with the business model. We've been using it here in Colorado since, I think we passed it here in Colorado in 2011, and since that time, we've formed over 350 LCA's have been formed in Colorado. Now, some of them have come from out-of-state businesses that want to form here because they don't have LCA statutes in their own states, and my colleague, John, will be talking about what's happening in his state. There are some states that have passed it, and it's been quite valuable. I like the business model, the LCA business model and the cooperative business model, one because of the democratic ownership, it really makes a difference to the workers to know that they are not just workers and getting a paycheck, but as owners, they have the ability to help guide decision-making at the co-op level. They help, they have a vested interest in making sure that the entity succeeds, that the business succeeds. And the LCA model that you are enacting is going to allow not just worker co-ops, but other kinds of co-ops. If you want a grocery store co-op, if you want an agricultural co-op, if you want a housing co-op, all of those can be formed under this LCA statute. It's not just limited to worker co-ops. But Colorado, as I said, has been working with co-ops for a long, long time. We have an Employee Ownership Commission that was formed by our governor, and that's been promoting worker co-ops and worker ownership and other forms of worker ownership for quite a few years now. And I think it's a model that Guam is going to find is very helpful in not just creating jobs, but holding jobs. You're going to have perhaps business owners that are retiring and they want to stop working, and so they have the opportunity to sell their businesses to their workers in a worker format, worker co-op format, and so it keeps the tax base in the community, it keeps the workers with jobs in the community, and the legacy of the business owner can continue as well. So I can come up with many examples for you of what we've done with co-ops over the years, and I'm delighted to stay online and answer any questions anyone may have about the LCA statute or worker co-ops. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Attorney Phillips, for your testimony and also for your assistance in developing the bill as well. Yeah, for the, I think it's almost been over a year since we've been talking through this. So next on the list, I'd like to recognize John Mcnamara, who is a co-director of the Northwest Cooperative Development Center. I think it's good evening as well. Is it evening there?
Yeah, about seven. Yeah, good afternoon, and thank you, Senator Perez, for introducing this bill as well as giving us the opportunity to testify. My name is John McNamara. I'm co-executive director of the Northwest Cooperative Development Center, which serves the Pacific Northwest states of Oregon, Idaho, and Washington. I also serve as vice chair of the Washington State Employee Ownership Commission, and am faculty at the International Center for Cooperative Management at the Sobe School of Business at St. Mary's University in Halifax, Nova Scotia. The Limited Co-op Association Act, you know, will allow workers to gain agency and control of their economic activities through participation in the cooperative enterprise model, and this form of business is purpose-driven, democratically-controlled, and human-centric. It creates a pathway for workers to engage in wealth-building through joint ownership of their enterprises, and will also allow them to manage in a way that balances the economic needs of the business and investors with the community needs of the worker members. I often like to paraphrase our Washington State Senator Patton, who championed our state's Employee Ownership Commission. He introduced the bill because he believes, as I do, that when employees have ownership in the company where they work, they tend to have better compensation, and they tend to have a better quality of work-life. The workers then can create meaningful work in a safe and humane environment, and this leads to a better quality of work-life balance, there's to be more engaged citizens and better family members. The end result of worker ownership includes stronger and more supportive families and stronger and more resilient communities. I've worked in the worker ownership world for the last 36 years. I've seen firsthand, worker cooperatives and worker ownership have created better working conditions and built community. And part of this is because cooperatives have goals that go beyond a simple return on investment for investors. They're able to build lasting economic centers, and cooperative startups exceed traditional businesses in terms of longevity by almost 400%. They also tend to avoid layoffs during economic downturns by taking collective pay cuts for the short term, and this not only keeps workers employed and being able to participate in the economy, it also allows the cooperative to immediately meet demand when the economy rebounds and returns. They don't have to go out and rehire and retrain a workforce to meet that demand. So when there's a lot of co-ops in an economic community or in a community, that community can rebound from a recession much faster than traditional businesses can. Likewise, when governments, and I know that there are not really subsidies proposed with this law, but when governments provide subsidies to co-ops, the money stays in the community and won't be siphoned off, and more importantly, once the subsidy ends, the cooperative is not going to seek greener pastures to find another subsidy. They're going to stay in the location, so it's definitely a benefit for using public funds as well. Part of that is because they aren't there necessarily just to find subsidies, but to use those subsidies to build long-term stability into their operations so that when the subsidy ends, they can continue to be a major part of the, and vibrant part of the local economy. I'm happy to answer any questions about how the worker model works and has helped build local economies in the United States and how it saves jobs in local communities here in Washington. But I want to close by thanking, again, the committee for its time and interest in this bill, and I look forward to its passage and continuing to do what I can to help create a cooperative economy. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. McNamara, for your testimony. The fourth person is on Zoom, Moneka De Oro for Micronesia Climate Change Alliance. You're recognized, Moneka, and good afternoon to you.
Hafedee, everybody. Thank you for joining us all the way from the States at such a long hour. I'm so grateful for you all to come and advocate for this really important and critical solution. My name is Moneka De Oro. I'm actually wearing earrings that I got from a cooperative of Amazonian women, in which they are uplifting their own communities and really using their skills to build economic power and build their community power, so I'm happy to wear these earrings for this occasion and really hoping, you know, the Amazon is really critically challenged by climate change and a lot of other factors, and so are we and the Marianas. Climate change is one of the major worldwide issues of our time, and our islands are on the front lines of this crisis. Micronesia Climate Change Alliance is a small Marianas-based nonprofit with a mission to uplift and unite Micronesian communities to create culturally-centered solutions that protect and heal our sacred islands, waters, and people. We were founded in Guahan, or Guam, in late 2018, shortly after super typhoon U2 devastated our sister islands in Tinian and Saipan. Since then, we've led a variety of initiatives to educate our islands about the climate crisis and empower our communities for solutions. One such community-based solution is cooperatives, like this one that's being discussed right now that we hope passes. Climate change is caused by an extractive system, one in which people take and take and take from Mother Earth without considering environmental limits. It's fueled by an economic system that creates poverty at the expense of an elite and wealthy class. Today, there are 2,153 billionaires who own more wealth than 4.6 billion people who make up 60% of the entire world's population. People are living in squalor like conditions here, squalor-like conditions in Guam. The poverty rate is almost a quarter of our total population, and homelessness is rapidly growing. This is one of the reasons why Micronesia Climate Change Alliance champions what is called a just transition. A just transition is one that seeks to build a new economic model that is equitable, just and aligned with protecting our natural resources, and that it's critical to realize this just transition because it addresses climate change and poverty. The just transition is a vision and a process of moving away from an extractive economy to a more regenerative one, one where collaboration and cooperation is at the center of the labor force. It's important to find ways in today's extractive economy and extractive systems to build towards that more regenerative economy. Cooperatives and focusing on building cooperative business models is one of those ways. Cooperatives are proven business models that are equitable, democratic, and regenerative. They often reduce, reuse, and recycle, and aim to lower negative impacts in their community because they are from that community. Cooperatives allow people with a shared idea and resources to come together and collaborate to build their business, a business that usually meets the needs of their own community. Cooperatives are democratically owned and controlled by their own members. There is a clear, powerful potential for cooperatives on Guahan. One way MCCA envisions cooperatives supporting our community is by the creation of like an arts and culture cooperative, one in which the members and the owners are artists, healers, crafters, and in this, and these are people who have so much wisdom and knowledge, but business isn't one of them. These aren't people who like to go file taxes or know how to execute contracts, but they have incredible wisdom and they have incredible talent. So if they all join together in a cooperative, they can use the money that they get from contracts and the money that they get from grants to hire an administrative or an accountant position who can handle all the business aspects of running and supporting their cooperative. That includes filing for taxes, reviewing and executing contracts, paying suppliers, keeping the books in line, and handling marketing. An artist cultural co-op is, could have their own structure, and it would empower artists to focus on their own art while having equal ownership and equal say in the decisions about cost-sharing, sharing the profits, and how they want this cooperative to uplift the community around us. The presence of more equitable business models on the island will definitely create and enrich our own community and uplift our families, which will ultimately build a more resilient community. This move of our community towards regeneration and alignment with our, this is, it's a move to be more aligned with our cultural values, one of deep, deep respect for one another and our earth and reciprocity, and it also just transitions us from being so dependent on foreign investment, so dependent on federal funding, and it's just a lot more innovative and savvy way of existing in the world today. So we definitely urge everyone in our community and you senators and lawmakers to support this bill and do what we can to uplift one another, especially in these times. Thank you so much.
It's Masi, Moneka, for your testimony. So I think at this point, I'm the only one here, so I can ask questions of the panel, so if they would like to go, you know, they can leave. I know it's pretty late over there, but yeah, I think one of the statistics that you brought up, Linda, Attorney Phillips, was there currently 350 cooperatives in Colorado, and so you were saying it's not just workers cooperative, but other types of cooperatives, and maybe if you can talk about how Colorado has been in the forefront of this, and what do you see, how do you, applying it to Guam in regards to this model, business model?
Well, the artist cooperative was a great example of how it can be used. We've formed a couple of different artist cooperatives that do exactly what was being discussed, and that's where you have a group of artists that come together as a group and form a cooperative, and they use the cooperative to provide what we call the back office or back room services that they don't know how to do themselves, whether that's bookkeeping, whether that's helping with marketing, whether that's creating a way to promote the artist businesses, whether it's help with leasing a space that can be used to show the artist's business, the artist's work. That can all be done with the co-op. We've also seen it in everything from, we have a small mechanic shop where the employees took over the business of the retiring owner, and it's just a regular mechanic shop. They work on trucks and cars, and they're all worker-owned businesses. It's a worker-owned business. We have grocery store co-ops where you have both the employees as well as the customers that come into the store are owners of the co-op. So there's many different ways. Another one that I would think that Guam might be interested in is a purchasing co-op, and that's where you have businesses that are all in the same industry, form a co-op together, and they can get bulk pricing from their suppliers at better rates, and then pass on those rates to their customers. So that's another type of co-op that's often described and used. I can come up with a million more. I'm an attorney, I can talk forever, so have other people answer questions.
All right. Yeah, so for John McNamara, if you can describe the, how the landscape is for the limited cooperative association? So I know there's the traditional co-ops, and so how does the limited cooperative association operate in that context in Washington State?
It's a relatively new law here in Washington, but I think the value of it is it does provide a way for those cooperatives that need extra capital to be able to raise it within a way that isn't extractive, that they can bring investors in, or it can even be a way of separating out people's patron relationship to the cooperative, and then their investor relationship to the cooperative. I can't think of a specific example right now in Washington. As I said, it's relatively new. I believe, I believe we do have a veterinary co-op that recently formed. I believe, I believe we do have a veterinary co-op that recently formed. And in that model, they're doing it as a conversion. So the owner of the veterinary clinic that has, I think, three or four clinics, so they want to expand it as they grow, they're using the limited co-op association to do sort of a leveraged buyout of the owner over time so that the workers do not have to necessarily go out and raise, you know, a million dollars or whatever to buy out the owner. They can, over time, the co-op will slowly buy out the owner over, you know, a certain number of years as the owner gets ready to retire. But also during that process, the owner will be transferring their institutional knowledge to the workers that are stepping into the role. So that's definitely one example. You know, I think it's definitely a lot of different ways to explore it. I think there's finding the right projects that fit with it. I mean, it can be, of course, with any project, we always try to defer to what the clients kind of are looking for and what they want and try to help them cobble together the model that works best for them. But I think the limited co-op association kind of lends itself to either be, to look and feel like the more traditional co-ops or be something more creative depending on what's allowed. And so it's a relatively versatile law in that sense.
Okay, so it's very versatile, basically. Is that what you're saying? It could still utilize the traditional way of doing cooperatives, but now we've had this added element of investors.
Right. And I should say, you know, in some of our projects, we helped a bookstore and it was consumer and worker-owned and it's doing very well. And that was done just as a standard cooperative with two stakeholder groups. And what we found was that many of the members, they not only wanted to join and pay their $100 to join, they also wanted to give the cooperative more capital because they believed in it. And so they wanted to, you know, provide thousands of dollars, which they did, but that had to be treated as a donation because it wasn't set up as an LCA. Had it been set up as a limited co-op association, they would have been able to do that as an investment that could have, you know, had better tax implications for the cooperative. So there are different, you know, just thinking of different ways of using it.
Okay, thank you for that. And then Mo, if you can talk about your community, how it, what's the landscape of limited cooperative associations versus traditional cooperatives? And if there's any advantage to the limited versus the traditional?
Absolutely. The land, as John said, you know, the LCA is relatively new. I think that like, you know, like Linda has a lot of the expertise on the kind of like the history of it, but it's still relatively new across the country. I think, I think a lot of the states that have developed cooperatives have created a state co-op or state worker co-op statute that they found to be pretty limited. And it's kind of like the way the businesses like need to develop, they're actually inhibited by the statutes that they're creating. And I think the limited cooperative association is flexible, as John said, enough to allow the business owners to, you know, like to fund it themselves to start up if they want or to accept outside investment, which is just, you know, as I'm sure you know, such a hard thing to get a business off the ground. So we are seeing a lot of businesses, especially at the startup stage, that are choosing this as the model that, you know, is a little bit easier to understand and a little bit easier to get financing for. I think for cooperatives, getting financing can be really difficult because most governments, most governments, most financial institutions, most lawyers, most accountants don't really understand cooperatives. I see Linda smiling, laughing at this. You know, it is fairly difficult. So I think in order to allow cooperatives to grow and to put them in the best environment to be able to, like, get money and make money and keep people in strong jobs, this forum really is, does seem to be the one that people are opting in for across the country. I think that it's a little too early to say, like, you know, what's the percentage of them across the country? And like, how are they doing comparatively? I just actually made a note to make sure to track that information in the future. But I will say, we are seeing a lot of people incredibly excited about the forum and really opting into it at the front of creating their businesses or converting them.
Okay, thank you for that. Because yeah, it's important to note that these are, this is a business model. So, you know, some can fail, some can succeed. And, you know, it'd be interesting to hear your insight into what are the pitfalls and making sure that these cooperatives can sustain themselves, right? As they go forward into also looking after the workers or the patrons, I should say. So in the bill, I know it's a very big bill, and there were some changes, like I said in the opening statement. The changes that I made were to ensure governance, strong governance. And so I know that anybody who wants to get involved in a cooperative probably should have an attorney, right? To look at through, you know, very fine detail of the organic rules of that organization, to really know what you're getting to, because not only are you sharing the profits, but also you're sharing in the liabilities of this association. So although it's a very idealistic concept and it attracts a lot of people who have altruistic intentions, you know, it's still, it's a business model. It comes down to being a business model that requires a lot of detail. There is one part, so I know in the Uniform Code it talks about relation to restrictive trade and antitrust law. So what are your thoughts about exemption from antitrust law? I mean, initially, I, you know, have concerns about any kind of exemption to antitrust law. But what are your thoughts about that? Any of the three in the panel, if you could discuss that? So yeah, if I can say the bill, this comes from the Uniform Code, right? Itself. And it's open to change. So that's why we have this public hearing, is to get insight and input into whether this should be amended. So Linda, Attorney Phillips, I saw you raise your hand.
John, did you want to say something?
You can go first.
From my understanding, that section was put into the uniform law because there was a time period in ancient times, in the 1930s, 40s, and 50s, where co-ops were looked at suspiciously, not LCAs, but co-ops in general, as possibly business entities that were conducting their businesses that violated antitrust laws because they were coming together as a group and there might have been pricing issues. Purchasing co-ops, I know, worry about antitrust laws a lot. I don't think other forms of co-op, whether you're a producer co-op or worker co-op or a marketing co-op, worry about antitrust laws so much. But I think that was the reason this was put in originally because co-ops were not, have not violated antitrust laws, and I think the statutes have confirmed that. John, did you want to add to that?
I think just to echo that, you know, there's probably, you know, I think co-ops were initially in the US attacked under the Sherman Antitrust Act until the Volstead Act was passed in the 1920s, gave them the ability to operate across borders. And that, I would also say, is that cooperatives have built-in transparency and openness and honesty are part of their values. Most worker co-ops that I know are very transparent with what they're doing and how they're acting. And I think that gives a certain amount, and also having that one member, one vote aspect to it. It would, I think, create, it would be kind of a rare situation for worker co-ops, especially to sort of go off the rails, but also that there is this built-in transparency that kind of undermines any sort of illegal trust activity that might be.
Okay. And so maybe if I remove that section, it would not have an impact? Or would you recommend that being removed? Or basically not giving the exemption?
If you're, if you're going to have purchasing co-ops, you might want to leave it in.
Okay, okay. All right. And what is your thought about putting a cap on voting power of 80% for patron members? I'm sorry, a cap of investor membership of 20% voting power?
I can start. I'm sure that John and Linda have feelings on the topic. Now, I typically am working specifically with worker cooperatives where workers are mostly owning 100% of the business. But I think even, and I think the LCA gives, as Linda said, room for like other models that are not just worker cooperatives, but I think ensuring that the workers have the majority of the vote. And like, you know, like the owners have a majority of the vote is incredibly important. And I think that that ratio makes it like feasible to make sure that the control really stays with like the stakeholders, whether it's the workers or the member owners. So, I mean, like, I think it really does depend on the model. But this, again, like, this format allows for flexibility so that we don't have to have like many different business legal forms for different kinds of cooperatives, but it makes it flexible to be a few different kinds of cooperatives and keep in step with the growing number of ways that cooperatives develop. So like, I think we are seeing more kind of like multi-stakeholder cooperatives that would have like different ratios of ownership. But I think having, making sure that the investors' section is low is important.
So is 20% too high for investor voting power? Or is it overly prescriptive?
I would let John or Linda ask, because I actually am not super deep in the co-op development side of it. Like, to me, it doesn't seem too prescriptive, but I think they have a much closer view of this one.
I will say, yeah, in the more of the international co-op community, I would say the limited co-op association is looked at rather skeptically within the cooperative, that cooperative community. That the US Department of Agriculture has what they call the user principles that are based in some part on the international statement on the cooperative identity. The user principles are that the users of the co-ops are the ones who benefit from and control and use the cooperative. And that generally means the patron members. It's adding investors into the mix is relatively a US concept. We are seeing, you know, some unique aspects of it, like real estate investment cooperatives and again, the limited co-op association. I'm a little bit more agnostic about it, but I do think that the key is that the patrons are the primary group that should be benefiting. And so the investors, it should be sort of a patient capital sort of investment. It's not really meant to, you know, there should be basically easier ways if people want to get a large return and payout. There are other investment opportunities out there. This is really about using investment to build community, to build resiliency and to support the, you know, local economy. And I think because of that, keeping as much patron control as possible is important. But the unique difference, I should say, between the limited co-op association and other co-op laws in Washington is only that it actually carves out a seat on the board and voting power for investors. Other co-op association laws in Washington allow people to be preferred shareholders and to invest, they just don't give the investors a voice in the organization. And so that's really the difference. And I think, so because of that, I think, you know, there should be some limits on it. I don't think 20% is too prescriptive at all. I think the Washington law probably has it at 50%, which I kind of feel is a little too lenient. But so 20% is fine with me.
Thank you for those responses. Yeah, so yeah, my concern was to make sure that the patron members retain control, considering this is a relatively new model. And, okay, so I appreciate the comments and if there's any amendments, other additional thoughts you have, I appreciate it if you, you know, can send that along to our committee. So yeah, at this time, I don't have further questions for you. So I know it's late, you know, feel free to drop out now if you need to. But we definitely would like to reach out to you for any further questions. So again, I really appreciate your attendance at this hearing. And, you know, you guys are the pioneers in this, so we're very fortunate to have you here today. So we're very grateful. It's Masi. Thank you. So at this time, Morgan, thank you so much, Attorney.
Thank you for inviting us.
And thank you, Mr. McNamara, as well as Mo Manclin. Thank you so much. You have a good evening, good afternoon, wherever you are. Thank you. All right, at this time, I would like to call upon those that want to testify on Bill 365. Please come to the table and, you know, have a seat. I'll just call names. In the meantime, we have Jordan Penuallo, Josh Laurenti, Tawid Marazbang, Tori Manley, Janelle Abanalas, Christian Siniklis, Maria Hernandez. And is there anyone else that would like to provide testimony that I haven't called up? Feel free to come and sit at the table. You can provide another seat. Meget, are you interested in providing testimony? Okay, so can we provide a seat? So first of all, thank you for being here. It's great to see such attendance. And it looks like, well, we'll hear from your testimony first of all. Okay, so I would like to recognize the next person on the list, if that's okay, is Jordan Penuallo. You're recognized, Jordan. If you can push the button, it should be read.
Thank you so much. Casaderia Mango, Buenos Aires, Hafaday, Senators. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Jordan Penuallo. I'm originally from Pompe, Federated States of Micronesia, but I live here in Guam and I work for Micronesia Climate Change Alliance. And I'm here to support Bill, this bill, which could open a door for for-profit cooperative businesses in Guam. As someone who has spent years studying and working in business, I want to share a personal story that illustrates why I believe the cooperative model could offer a brighter, more resilient economic future for our island. I received my degree in International Business Administration in the Netherlands, where I was exposed to diverse models of economic systems. My education gave me a global perspective, yet my heart always remained in the Pacific. So after completing my degree, I returned home to Pompe to help run my family's businesses, which are deeply reliant on the tourism industry. Like many families across the islands, our livelihood depended on visitors, on welcoming people from all over the world to experience the beauty of our island and culture. I kept the businesses going, but unfortunately, the pandemic struck. Pompe was actually one of the last places in the world to get COVID. We had an almost immediate shutdown of our borders. And while I'm incredibly grateful that this kept us safe, I would be lying if I said it wasn't difficult. Naturally, terrorism came to a halt. The empty rooms, the silent dining areas, and the lack of visitors, it was devastating for many businesses. Like so many businesses, we faced the unimaginable reality of potentially closing our doors. We were fortunate enough to receive US government subsidies during this time, and that lifeline was crucial. Without it, our businesses and our family's source of income and our workers' source of income could have been lost. But that experience made me think deeply about the fragility of our current economic systems. It became clear that there had to be a more resilient, there had to be more resilient models, one that didn't leave families like mine and the family of our workers vulnerable to forces beyond our control. That search for solutions led me to the cooperative model. Cooperatives are unique because they're built on principles of shared ownership, democratic control, and mutual benefit. They provide a way for businesses to be resilient by sharing both the risk and the rewards. Imagine a business where employees are also co-owners, where decisions are made collectively and where profits are reinvested into the community rather than taken out of it. Cooperatives provide this pathway. I do wonder sometimes if my family's businesses had been structured as a cooperative, whether we would have weathered that pandemic even with more stability. Rather than relying solely on government aid, a cooperative business, a cooperative business model could allow for a system where both owners and workers share responsibility and the benefits of keeping the businesses afloat. where both owners and workers share responsibility and the benefits of keeping the businesses afloat. It's a model that empowers the community to support one another, not just in times of crisis, but every day. Also, uh, on an even more personal note, I believe since, uh, within the cooperative model, you would be, uh, sharing responsibility, it would just be a lot less stressful as a business owner. The cooperative model aligns perfectly with the values of many island nations, uh, just like here in Guam, where we have values, um, based on the culture of reciprocity, community support and interdependence. These principles aren't just words to the foundation of our lives here. When someone's in need, we step up. We don't leave each other behind. Cooperative, cooperative businesses embody the same spirit. They're about people working together. And while profit is part of the business cooperative, business cooperatives, there's also a emphasis on uplifting and sustaining each other. Cooperatives are governed by principles like democratic control and economic participation. This means that this is, decisions aren't just handed down by a few at the top. They're made by the people who are actually impacted by them. For a small community like Guam, this could, this can mean business models that are more aligned with local needs, uh, that are more sustainable and are resilient in times of crisis. The COVID-19 pandemic showed us all that vulnerabilities of our current economics, our current economic structures. So many businesses, especially small, family-owned ones, were scrambling to survive. In contrast, uh, cooperatives provide a framework for economic resilience, economic resilience. By sharing ownership, workers and stakeholders share not just the profits, but also the responsibility to keep businesses running through tough times. When people have a stake in the business, they're more invested in seeing it succeed. This makes cooperative businesses more adaptable to changes in the economy, more resilient to disruptions and more deeply rooted in their communities. I believe one day a cooperative model, uh, would allow business, businesses in Guam to build that kind of resilience. When hard times come, decisions about layoffs, cuts and shifts in strategy aren't made by executives on the other side of the world. They're made by people who actually live here, who know what's best for their families and their communities. And if that's not your cup of tea, then that's great too, because this bill isn't about creating the way, but a way for even more diverse ways of participating in an economy. Senators, for, for me, the cooperative model isn't just about, uh, profits. It's a pathway to a diverse and resilient economy for Guam. By passing this bill, you would be opening the door for Guam, uh, to business, to build businesses that are more aligned with the values of our community. Cooperatives would give us a way to create economic stability that doesn't rely solely on the outside interest or fragile industries, but on our own people working together. This is economic self-determination in its truest form, a model that keeps our wealth, our power and our future here on the island. In closing, I would love to ask you to support this bill. This is an opportunity to make a powerful choice for Guam's future, to support a business model that reflects the strength, unity and resilience of its people. We can build a more stable economy, one that doesn't survive, that just survive crises, but thrives in harmony with our values. Let's take the steps toward a more resilient cooperative future for Guam. Thank you, Senator, for your time and for considering this important legislation. Kalanganap and Sizu, it's Masi.
Thank you so much, Jordan, and, uh, thank you for also meeting with me regarding this bill. So all your efforts as well. Uh, next on the list, we have Josh Lorenti.
Hafaday, good afternoon. Uh, Guahuji Josh Lorenti. I'm a activist and community organizer, uh, here to strongly support Bill 365-37, formally introducing economic cooperatives to Guam's entrepreneurs, workers and communities. Uh, I want to begin by saying that almost everywhere we look nowadays, um, we see our people, uh, struggling under the weight of these times. Uh, I think everyone in this room knows somebody who is struggling to pay their bills, afford our rent, care for our loved ones and put food on the table. And that's because the rising cost of living has made making ends meet here, uh, a daily struggle to survive. At the same time, Guam is home to so many bright entrepreneurs, so many dedicated workers, but the enduring economic strains of colonialism and capitalism are continuing to overburden our people, increasing the price of being able to call this place our home. Uh, this legislature has a responsibility to not only address these systemic injustices, but also to better equip our people with the resources, opportunities and tools to succeed here, uh, for ourselves and for this community. And at this critical time, economic cooperatives offer a powerful tool that can help keep our people, um, rooted and prosperous here. Uh, co-ops create workplaces where profit is more equitably distributed. They empower workers to have decision-making power in how business is done. They create businesses who pay their fair share in taxes and they help ensure that wealth isn't just exported by foreign-owned businesses who make a buck here only to turn it around and deposit our money elsewhere. So economic cooperatives really do help ensure that wealth is localized here amongst our people, amongst our communities. And at this critical time, we need that now, uh, more than ever. Uh, so just a quick story. I, I first learned about cooperatives, uh, last year when I accepted what was, what I thought was going to be a dream, uh, job as a, uh, political manager at a environmental justice nonprofit. Um, at the time that I joined, most of our staff was new. And so we were looking ahead to our strategic planning as an opportunity to reset our organization and get on the same page about who we are and the work we were about. Externally, as a grassroots organizing nonprofit, we really prided ourselves on helping draw down decision-making power to the communities most affected. And we thought long and hard about how we could reflect that value internally as a team. So we did research on cooperative models in the nonprofit context. Uh, we talked to other organizations who had already taken that step. And we brought forward a proposal to our executive director for how we could adopt a cooperative model at our nonprofit so that we could essentially walk the talk when we're out there organizing the community. Unfortunately, the response to our proposal was, in short, um, the future of this organization is not cooperative. And if you don't like that, you can leave. Uh, and that was very disappointing for us to hear from the leaders of a so-called grassroots organization. And after hearing that, many of us did make the hard decision to leave. And in closing, I'd just like to say that I, I believe in extending opportunities to others that have been denied to us personally. And while I couldn't, um, seize the opportunity to work at a cooperative back then, um, in this bill, we have a real opportunity to empower our island's workers and entrepreneurs with a cooperative option, to help them hold power in their workplaces and, and prosper here. So I humbly ask this legislature to support Bill 365-37. I ask for support for economic cooperatives and to really just put another tool in the hands of our people so that we can continue to work here together, prosper together and continue to call this island home. So thank you, Senator Perez, for introducing this bill and, um, I hope we can get this passed. Sina Masi.
It's Masi Josh for your testimony and your story. Um, and, um, yeah, thank you for your support. Uh, at this time, I'd like to recognize Tewid Merazbang for his testimony.
Hafaday and good afternoon, Senator Perez. Thank you for introducing this very important bill. Uh, my name is Tewid Merazbang, a CEO and co-founder of Pacific Nesian Equities. Try to, um, make it short, but I do have a couple of things that I do want to highlight about cooperatives. But first of all, I want to talk about economic democracy and why it's so important. Um, one is, uh, economic democracy, uh, we know from studies, particularly the University of Glasgow study titled New Meaning of Economic Democracy. And it talks about, um, what economic democracy is. And basically, the study shows that there are different countries out there. There are countries out there that when they utilize economic, when they have better economic democracy, they have reduced income inequality and they reduce poverty. It's a study that, that study out there by, uh, by University of Glasgow. And they looked at it and they, and they looked at these countries that have economic democracy and they, they do greatly in this economic democracy index. And the countries, we're not surprised, these countries are Finland, Switzerland, Norway, Iceland. And they look at it and they often rank high in the economic democracy, uh, economic democracy index. They have reduced income inequality and they have reduced poverty. And they looked at that model and they tried to figure out why do they rank so high in the economic democracy index model? And that's because they have democratic participation. They have enterprises that allow democracy to thrive. And one such enterprises that are shown in these models are cooperatives. Cooperatives is very democratic in nature. And so when you have more of these enterprises throughout the economy, more democratic enterprises, you have reduced poverty and you have reduced inequality. That is what economic democracy is about. So that's, that's why this, these co-ops are so important to an economy, to a community. And basically, and if you look at cooperatives, there's even more positive things about cooperatives. Cooperatives and there are studies out there, the Economic Democracy Center, uh, shows that, uh, co-ops have high job retention rate. They reduce reuse, they often reduce reuse and recycle because the member, the workers are members and owners of the, their enterprises. They care more so about the waste that is generated into their community. As a co-owner of Tom Hong Grill and Bar, and, and I work there often, I'm more conscientious about the waste that is being generated. So we want, so oftentimes we transition into, uh, paper straws. We have vegan options. So workers, so cooperatives, uh, often reduce and reuse and recycle because the workers are owners of the enterprise, of their businesses. They also have a 90% success rate, uh, over the course of five years in comparison to traditional businesses. That's a 90% success rate in comparison to business, traditional businesses that have 40% success rate over the course of five years. They also have, uh, a very good positive track record in paying their fair share of taxes. When you have enterprises paying their fair share of taxes, those taxes go back to the community. Those communities are able to fund, communities and the government are able to fund for needed services for their community. And because the members are part of the community, they know exactly what is best for their community. So they make those, this, and because they're owners of their enterprises, they make the decisions that is best, best for their community. Cooperatives also focus on the circular economy, meaning that the revenue that is generated, the profits that are generated go back to the, to the members and go back to the community. And so it's a circular economy. That's a, uh, another very, um, positive track record of what cooperatives do. But essentially, again, cooperatives are, workers come together and they own their own enterprise and they democratically control it and they democratically own it. It's a, it's, it's a very beautiful thing. And so this LCA, this, this bill, this cooperative is going to be very, uh, powerful and helpful for the community of Guam. I want to just quickly highlight what Pacific Nesian Equities is about. So Pacific Nesian Equities, because we, we're not, um, because there's no cooperative bill in place, we're structured as a benefit cooperative. And it was very expensive to form a, a cooperative that's a, a entity structured as a benefit cooperative because there's no legal entity in place in Guam to, um, to file against. It's very, it was very expensive. We had to go to Colorado. We had to talk to an attorney. But one is we had to find the attorney. We had to talk to the attorney. We had to pay the attorney. Then we had to get that, that, that legal document, bring it over to Guam, then find an attorney that was interested in doing it. We had to find, we had to go through three attorneys, um, before we finally landed at, um, office of, uh, for attorney, um, I've already forgotten the attorney, Camacho. And so that was expensive to produce. Um, then we had to file it. And so it was very expensive. With this, with this LCA bill, it's streamlined. It, it, it details exactly what you need to do to call yourself a cooperative. When, when you go, uh, shopping and you see an LCA on the business, just like if there's an LLC, uh, this, this bill will say, uh, a business is an LCA. So the wonderful thing is when you're going through, uh, shop, when you're shopping, you're going to restaurants and there's an LCA on that, the name of the business, you're going to know that the business was formed as a cooperative and it meets, it meets those strict legal requirements to call your, call yourself a cooperative. And a cooperative is democratically owned, democratically controlled. And so that, that's what this bill, uh, what I, why I support this bill, it'll, it'll do all that. I will just kind of close it and say, uh, share, share a quick story. Um, when I was in California, I was, I was campaigning for Bernie Sanders. And, uh, I remember on Bernie's platform, Bernie Sanders' platform, he made cooperative a, a very important part of his platform. Just as Jeremy Corbyn, who was running Prime Minister for the UK, who made it an important part of his platform because they know that cooperatism is an important part of, of reducing poverty, reducing income inequality. And it builds the econ, economic democracy. In fact, they had two, two important bills on their, two important agendas on their platform. And it was when they, uh, when they become president, there's two bills that they're gonna, they're gonna push. They're gonna push, uh, any business that's up for sale, they must first offer it to the workers. And if the workers were interested in buying the business, the, the government would give them, um, grants, training, uh, zero percent interest free loans. That's just how important cooperatives are to an economy, uh, to the economy. And, and these two individuals had the foresight to understand just how powerful cooperatives are. And so in closing, if we can reduce income inequality and we can reduce poverty and there's a way to do it and there's a proven track record to do it and there are studies that show it and cooperative is the way, let's push this bill. Let's support it. And that's why Pacific Nesian Equity supports it. Thank you very much, Senator Perez, for your time.
It's us, Masi Tewid, for all your efforts and your patience too as well. Um, so thank you. Next, we have Tori Manley, uh, for your, uh, testimony.
Hafaday, everyone. This is Tori Manley speaking. I am a community member, an environmental and human rights advocate and a sole proprietor of a small business. And I also work at a climbing gym and a badminton gym, which I would like to use as a sort of case for the support of this cooperative. The climbing gym and the badminton gym together are two separate businesses, but they share the ownership of four different owners. All these owners work already in these spaces and they already make good decisions together. And it feels, it seems like they already exercise the framework of what a cooperative is, but without the legal framework to support it. So I'd like to bring up that I've never heard of a cooperative or what it meant until I was acquainted with Pacific Hinesian Equalities and, um, Micronesian Climate Change Alliance. And they've brought more education to the community. So because the climbing gym and the badminton gym have four different owners, they already have different perspectives and experiences that go alongside the cooperative without being a cooperative themselves. So if we were able to give owners, community members and other workers good education on these sort of infrastructures, then we would be able to have more economic stability for the whole island and even attract some other workers that would prefer a cooperative rather than the traditional framework for businesses. They already exhibit economic democracy with each other. They already make decisions that align well with, um, worker policies and worker well-being. They take into account what we say already. And for people of my generation and people younger and older, the economics is already turning to places that, it's already turning to the need and want for workplaces that value, um, collective goodwill. There's so many people who decide not to work at different There's so many people who decide not to work at different places because they know they're not going to be happy at these different locations. So worker, worker happiness, so to say, has been proven to keep people in their workplace and it helps. So instead of training someone every six months because they're unhappy with their workplace, if we have this sort of framework, then there'll be more people who would stay at their job because they have already all the benefits that they need to support their family and have a good livelihood at their workplace. This cooperative, from what I've learned, has been good for climate change resilience. From what I've seen working at the climbing gym and the badminton gym, the owners are already seeing, working into what works for their customers. And these customers every day come in to be together with other people. And with that, they already are building establishments and connections that help with economic resilience and economic, climate change resilience. And as attorney Phillips mentioned, it also, again, attracts other foreign workers. And instead of investors putting money here and it could eventually be driven out, the money is kept here. It also helps with climate change resilience because there are workers and the owners that are creating the sort of decisions that reduce costs and reduce waste already. It also provides the legal framework to keep the owners accountable. For the climbing gym, it does get a little messy because there are four different owners and none of them have done a cooperative before, but if they were to have the education and the framework for it, they wouldn't need to reinvent the wheel as their business goes, as time goes. They would have the next steps ready from the bill and from possible further education to be provided. The social welfare projects alongside the business will also flourish. There are already projects that the gym has for social well-being, such as the Special Olympics that they hosted recently, and they also accept donations for re-bolting. The re-bolting all over the island because this equipment gets corroded. It helps create safety for other workers because the gym is already funding the social welfare projects. Thank you, and that is my case study for the bill to approve Bill Number 365-37. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Tori, for being here and providing your testimony and insight. Next, we have Generalin Abanalas. You're recognized, Generalin.
Hi, Hafadeh. Camusta and buenas, Senator. I am presenting the testimony on behalf of myself as a social entrepreneur to disclose. I also work as the district manager for Northern Guam Soil and Water Conservation District, as well as the president of the Homegrown Collective, which is a cannabis advocacy group. I show strong support for Bill 365-37 to establishing the Guam Uniform Limited Cooperative Association Act. As an active member in my community, I believe cooperatives will be majorly beneficial to our island in all industries, inclusive of the cannabis industry. This bill, if passed into a law, allows all of its, all of its members equal voting rights into an organization instead of having to work in silos. Western ideology does not work as well as it could on our island when we are highly family and community oriented. Big decisions are usually made for us without input from others, which can lead to segregation and lack of information sharing. Important decisions are made by the community. For example, a business can be owned by one person, however, the business cannot be successful without the owner and their staff's work to progress forward. Employees and community members directly experience the impacts, both positively and negatively, from decisions made without their input. By consider, by considering other voices in an organization, the better the culture of the company or organization will be. In regards to the cannabis industry, it can assist our green community to build a more resilient and sustainable economy for our island by giving voice to different aspects the cannabis industry involves, such as social, medical, environmental, economical, and spiritually based entities. This overall can create and assist in the conscious culture movement where diversity, equity, and inclusion are grandfathered in and decrease turnover for any organization aiming to achieve their goals in the most ethical way. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Generalin, for your testimony. Next, we have Christian Suniclas. You want to go next? Okay, so, all right, Meget, yes, you're recognized then, Meget Bavakwa.
Sorry, I have a meeting, I need to run to Spencer's. Okay. Oh, sidus masi, sidus masi. Nonhusi Michaeluhan Bavakwadzen. Huofefes esti tinestigu hu paogo paraguahu namaisa. Lo hugovse popote esti na, esti na bill, hugovse popote esti na ideha para esti cooperatives, LCA's winigidzaguan. Senzahu esti na ideha. Giganhu hunok esti na ideha. Ginen astevi adzu na workshop. Oh, govzahu kalangbenabe hinasoku por esti. Sa hu jahasutate nai gi estoriata. Sa para gofapmamna champu nai. Ti manma faisinitautauta. And I megai matulaleka gi tanota. Hafamalago'mo. Hafamalago'mo pari adelantup gi hollam estina tano. Gi hollam ilinala midzu. Hafamalago'mo pari i sistemon salud, healthcare. Para edukashon, para isalapi ekonomia. Hafamalago'mo. Ti manma faisinitautauta. To'ru esti tautauta senhidzon. Matuli maugi i ideha, i sistema, i malagoniha. Zepas matanum isi midzan i, i sistema niha ideha niha. To'ru adzu siha. Zepas i tautauta masununha i tinanum niha. Mashe a invasive, mashe a putti taino bu'una na klassen tinanum zanflorasiha. Lo, engen tafaisen i manmofana na tautauta taiguhi simagalahi hurau. Simagahagasusambra. Hafana klassen ekonomiha nai i malago'mo. Shempi mas hu ma'adza zenesti na ideha pari i LCA. Sa mas manatsilung i tautauta. Mas manparerehu i tautauta ti unu na tautauta i mastakilu. To'ru i podet gaigigi kanayna to'ru isalapi gaigigi kanayna si na tautauta. Pad edzu hashe a manatsilung. Zan i tautauta antes taiguhi imeganyana manatipu na tautauta zan niha ga'omija adzu na klassen sistema lenatla. Pas para guahu un tautauta govzahu decolonization gi to'ru imanera. Zahu esti na bill sasinatanala la'la decolonization gi esti gi hollam i komunita. Gi esti manera pari ekonomiha lokwe. Sa hungen para i tautauta gi hollam i komunita ni munamalago'mo na la'la esti na ideha para decolonization pari small businesses, pari ekonomia hungen esti munai tsansa para adzu. Pas hungen yinfin hugovse poti esti sidus masi.
It's Massey, Director Bavakwa, for your being here today and providing your testimony. All right, next, we have Christian Suniclas. And yeah, thank you too for meeting with me as well and working through this. So you're welcome, you're, you're recognized.
Biba. Okay, so Hafadeh, Chairperson, Senator Sabina Perez, and members of the committee. My name is Christian Suniclas from the village of Dedito, and I'm a community organizer on the island with the Micronesian Climate Change Alliance. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony and support of Bill Number 365-37, or what we call the Building Cooperative Futures Act. This bill is a crucial step forward in creating economic opportunities for our people and addressing some of the island's longstanding challenges with sustainable development, job creation, and economic diversification. The island has seen a small bit of what cooperatives can bring for our island, with the farmers' co-op and the fishermen's co-op, where community members can collaborate and benefit from the fruits of their labor. An example of it already, an example of it really does take a village sometimes. To list a few other benefits when it comes to economic diversification, Guam currently relies on very few industries like tourism and unfortunately, military spending. This has left us vulnerable to economic shocks for the island. Cooperatives provide a model that fosters homegrown businesses in multiple sectors that can strengthen our local community and reduce dependence on external sources. There's also community ownership and empowerment. Unlike traditional business models, cooperatives are community-owned enterprises that allow members to have a direct control and participation. This structure empowers local residents by giving them a stake in the success of the business and ensuring that profits remain within the community. Number three, job creation and fair wages. Worker cooperatives would pave a path to create jobs that offer fair wages and good working conditions. Cooperative prioritizes the well-being of employees and maximizing profits for shareholders, contributing to higher job satisfaction and lower turnover rates. There's also support for small producers and entrepreneurs. This bill would provide small farmers, fishermen, and the local community members with a legal structure to pool resources and market their goods more effectively. There's also economic resilience. During economic downturns, cooperatives tend to be more resilient because they operate with long-term sustainability in mind and are deeply rooted within the community. By supporting this bill, we are helping to build a more robust and self-reliant local community. And of course, there's the cultural alignment aspect. The cooperative business model aligns with Guam's cultural values of an alfa ma'lik, also mutual cooperation and respect. Cooperatives reflect the spirit by encouraging shared decision-making and promoting collective well-being. This business pathway would allow Guam to tailor a cooperative model to fit our unique needs and circumstances. Today, most small businesses within the island have a short longevity, only existing three to five years. What would it look like if individuals with the same ideals could collaborate together in building a community business? Just to name a few cooperatives that have surpassed this three to five benchmark. To highlight grocery cooperatives, there's Park Slope Food Co-op in Brooklyn, New York, in existence for 51 years. There's PCC Community Markets in Seattle, Washington, for 71 years. These cooperatives offer locally sourced, sustainable, affordable groceries to its members who participate in store operations by working shifts. This model keeps costs low and builds a strong sense of community. To highlight worker cooperatives, there's the Cooperative Home Care Associates located in Bronx, New York. They've been in existence for 39 years. Employees are, are members who are able to have a stake within the co-op's success, receive competitive wages and benefits from skills training and job security. By prioritizing worker welfare, this co-op achieves higher job satisfaction and of course, patient care. It provides a stable, well-paying jobs for the community. A local organization that I've already seen practicing and exploring these ideals and would highly benefit from the passing of Bill 365-37 is the Malu Zero Waste Refillery with a democratic voting process of their business. To highlight housing cooperatives, especially at a time when the island and many communities are facing an extreme housing crisis and unavoidable, and unaffordable homes for themselves and their family, the Sinosa Cooperative in Austin, Texas have been existence for 22 years. The New Era Windows Cooperative located in Chicago, Illinois have been in existence for 11 years. These cooperatives are member-owned housing communities that provide affordable housing to residents who collectively manage the property and make decisions democratically. This structure fosters a supportive environment, reduces housing costs, and ensures that housing remains accessible and well-maintained, especially to the most impacted by the climate crisis. By passing Bill Number 365-37, the legislature will be paving the way for a new era of business development on Guam. This legislation is not just about economics, but it's about giving our people the tools to take control of their own future and create businesses that serve their own communities. I respectfully urge the committee and the Guam Legislature to pass this fruitful bill for the community. Thank you once again for the opportunity to provide this testimony, and I look forward to positive changes for our island. Sidus masi.
It's Massey. Christian, for your passionate and well, well-researched testimony. I appreciate all those examples. Last but not least, we have Maria Hernandez. Maria Hernandez.
Sidus masi, Senator Sabina. Nonhusi Maria Hernandez May, and this is Karita. Say hi. So as a community organizer, like many mamas, we do this for our children and, and for the future of all of our children here in Guahan. And I'm also a graduate of the University of Guam with a master's in business. And looking back at my time at the, at UOG and that program, I am really confused as to why cooperatives weren't covered in the program because when you really look into the benefits of this system, it's really like a secret solution for a lot of the issues that we face. So I come here in support of Bill 365-37. It's a way to strengthen our economy and reclaim our self-sufficiency. And they provide, provide a powerful pathway that aligns with our values here and honors our shared history, culture, and future. Cooperatives exist in a sweet spot in the for-profit and nonprofit world. It's a revolutionary model. They play two distinct and complementary roles. They act as a business to make money, but there's so much more. They're people-centered enterprises run for and by the members that align with cultural goals and values. They are competitive, innovative, and they started in 1884 by pioneers who, out of desperation, opened a store together to sell things they could neither get nor afford alone. We're in a desperate place here in Guahan, and this is a way to take our power back, tackle debt, poverty, and unemployment. The cost of rent here in Guahan has increased by 40%. We're being priced out of our homeland. My own brothers and many family members have had no choice but to leave the island due to the higher cost of living, and we see this trend across our entire island community. Cooperatives are a solution for this polycrisis. There are over 7 million memberships in cooperatives around the world. Everything from grocery stores, universities, to banks. Cooperatives provide opportunities for training, skill-building, and leadership development. Many provide incentives for those who purchase from them. By empowering our own community members with these opportunities, we ensure that Guam's economic progress is led by tomorrow's for tomorrow's in our homeland. Where our, and when our native people are centered, our entire community benefits. For thousands of years, our ancestors lived sustainably on these lands, cultivating a system of mutual support, resource sharing, and collective responsibility. Every family contributed to the community's well-being. However, colonization and recent economic systems that prioritize profit over people have eroded much of this communal fabric, replacing it with competition and exploitation. Yet, the heart of our culture remains, and through economic cooperatives, we can reclaim these principles in ways that provide tangible benefits for our people. Cooperatives allow us to revive a community-centered economic model where resources are locally sourced, wealth is shared, and decisions are made collectively by those who will benefit directly. This model supports self-determination, something critical to our people, especially in light of ongoing efforts to reclaim our land, protect our resources, and preserve our culture for future generations. By creating cooperatives that align with our cultural practices, we protect our traditions while fostering economic independence. Our connection to the land is sacred, and economic cooperatives enabled us to establish and uphold sustainable practices that prioritize our island's environmental health instead of businesses that extract and deplete. We envision cooperatives that restore and respect our ecosystems, ensuring they'll continue to nourish our people for generations. I urge our community and policymakers to recognize the unique potential of cooperatives in building resilient, culturally-aligned economy that uplifts and honors the tomorrow people. We already have models to build from and experts who can push this forward by investing and supporting economic cooperatives. We're investing in our community, our culture, and our future. For the Nenis and for our future, biba economic cooperatives and biba Guahan. Sayina Ma'asi, sidus masi for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you so much, Maria, and thank you to all that have attended this public hearing. Yeah, when I first heard about cooperatives is I, I first saw, heard about Mon Dragon and how successful they are. They're one of the biggest cooperative in the world and very successful. And I think it's very important to see that this business model is sustainable and hopefully, you know, it's yet to be seen whether we can replicate something like this, but you know, with a group like this, is very positive and forward-thinking, you know, I'm, you know, feel very confident. But of course, we have to put this before the body and I hope we get support from my colleagues. So I appreciate all of you providing testimony here and thank you for all your hard work and, and yeah. And just to also let people who want to further provide testimony, so if there are no further testimonies for Bill 365-37, this bill is duly heard and the committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 PM Friday, November 17. Friday, November 15th. Please address all testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics Research, and Planning. It can be dropped off at the mailboxes here at the Guam Congress Building or emailed to office@senatorparas.org. So thank you, everyone, for your attendance, and have a great day. So we're going to move on to the next item. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the next item of the agenda, which is to hear testimony on Bill 370-37COR, sponsored by myself. Senator Sabina Flores Perez is an acta man, section 103, 103B and 103, 103F of chapter 103, Title 11 Guam Code annotated, relative to empowering the Banking and Insurance Board to better serve community needs through reforming the Banking and Insurance Board's composition and requiring monthly board meetings. So I'd like to make some opening comments. So Bill 370-37 proposes to modify the composition and increase meeting frequency of the Banking and Insurance Commission in order to increase accessibility by the public with concerns and issues pertaining to insurance and banking on Guam. Currently in statute, one-third is reserved for insurance representatives, one-third is reserved for banking representatives, and the remaining third or three members are reserved for those who are not affiliated with either industry, one of them being a lawyer and another one being a classified government employee. Specifically, Bill 370-37 proposes changing the composition of the board to one representative for each industry and with the remaining seven as non-industry members. Bill 370 also proposes increasing the frequency of the meetings from quarterly to monthly. The impetus for this bill was in response to concerns raised by members of the public of unresolved issues pertaining to insurance and the rate of resolution of claims, increase of insurance rates related to tariffs, and inaccessibility of liability of auto insurance for cars exceeding 10 years. Bill 370-37 is an opportunity to reevaluate our current regulatory framework to allow for greater response to issues that arise with consumers and also a means for proactive change for greater resiliency within both industries. I look forward to further dialogue and testimony on this bill. So invitation letters were sent out to Commissioner, who's here today, to provide testimony, Commissioner Michelle Santos, as well as the board members of the Banking and Insurance Commission. Fiscal note was received, November 6th. It states, "The uniform compensation for boards and commissions, as cited in Title 5, Chapter 43, compensates a member of a board or commission the amount of $50 for attending a board or commission meeting not to exceed $100 per month." So absent specific information from DRT as it relates to the board's compensation, should the legislation become added, the annual fiscal impact of monthly board schedule meetings would be an increase of approximately $3,600. So at this time, I would like to call on those that have signed up to testify. We'll start with the government agencies and then followed by those that are here that signed up. We did receive written testimony by the commissioner, so if you can please come up. Anyone else, I think if you can come up, or come up afterwards, so... Or the banking and... I see members of the Banking and Insurance Commission. John McKinnon, if you want to... Do you have testimony to provide? Okay. Anybody else from the board? Okay. Juno, do you know if you would like to come up? Yeah, if you can come up as well. All right. So we are going to start with Commissioner Santos. Thank you for being, making the time today, and you are recognized for... You're recognized to provide your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is Michelle Santos. I am the Banking and Insurance Commissioner with the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Senator Perez and members of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, and Statistics, and Research and Planning, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony regarding Bill 370. As Commissioner, I lean very heavily on the guidance of the members of the Banking and Insurance Board. Whether the issue is in banking or insurance, they assist, and it is a good balance. Reducing the number of industry members does not help me as Banking and Insurance Commissioner. It does not help our division. Under the current composition of the board, no single industry controls the majority of the board. There are three members in the banking industry, three members in the insurance industry, an attorney, a classified employee of the government of Guam, and another member who is not an executive or director of a bank or insurance company. In most professional licensing boards like PEELS, the Guam Board of Accountancy, the Medical Licensing Board, et cetera, they are all run by people in these professions. The Guam Board of Accountancy, for example, has five board members. They are all CPAs. They accept and approve exam applications and license CPAs and discipline their fellow members. Who can do this better than those in the same profession? It's the same with the medical board, et cetera. Where will we get the expertise if not from the industry? We really don't see how not having these experts on the board will better serve the needs of the people of Guam. This bill also does not address how to handle existing board members. This may be a problem if there is a challenge if the bill is enacted. We ask that this body give us guidance on this procedure. Requiring monthly meetings is an administrative nightmare. It will mean constant notification of board meetings and added expenses. It will be a continuing cycle. Without the proper resources, we'll just fall behind with regular work. We also remind the committee that this division handles real estate and securities as well. We had no time to research what other jurisdictions do to handle these kinds of situations. We are not resistant to change, but wouldn't mind if we had more thought and research put into all of this. We are not aware... We were not aware that they were a problem. No one ever complained about board meetings or the composition of our board. We were not consulted nor made aware until the bill was introduced. We're willing to work with you, Senator, on whatever issues, you know, to make this work for us, and I thank you and appreciate the opportunity to provide testimony.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. So if, I guess I can ask questions if you don't mind staying for further questions after testimony.
Sure.
Maybe if anybody else would like to provide testimony, you can come up to the table. Nobody else? Okay. Well, feel free if you change your mind. Next, so Juno, are you representing the board?
Hi.
Or in your own personal capacity?
Personal capacity.
Okay.
Board meeting on... My name is Juno Un. I'm the board member of Banking and Insurance Commission. And we didn't have any board meeting to collect which of the voting member. So I cannot say I'm on behalf of a board member, but I'd like to address my opinion and testimony on by myself.
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. I agree with Commissioner's opinion, like PEELS Board, the Doctors Board, CPA's Board, even the Bar Association. I'm CPA, I'm a lawyer, so I know all about it. Those associations controlling their members by their special knowledge and experience. So if the Banking Insurance Board is also organization for the professionals, totally she is right. However, our Banking Insurance Board's mission, stated in the law and from the intent of the law, is actually regulating and overseeing the insurance and banking industry. So there is a totally different than other professional field board. This is not a professional industry board for the professionals. This board is for the public side. Try to regulating, overseeing, regulate, control the special industry who does not know much about the public side. And three members is balancing, that's true, insurance or banking. But insurance and banking industry is not conflicting each other. They are not fighting each other. So if the matter handled by insurance, it's handled by the insurance board member. If the matter is subject to the banking, the banking board member. So out of nine, except the attorney and government employees, only one from the public side. So it is not just conflict of interest to serve the purpose of the board itself, more than the conflict of interest, in my opinion, is bias. How the insurance industry and banking insurance industry, especially the employee, executive employee of each company industry, they can look themselves, they can... How they can regulate, how they can oversee their regulations. So this is for the board composition, in my opinion, was set up by to protect insurance and the banking industry, not for the public or people of the Guam. And the laws take clearly stated what's the reason, the board has it, what's the purpose, what's the mission. If you look at the wording, definitely regulation oversight would assure that banks and insurance companies operating in Guam comply with the local laws and regulations for the public. So it seems to me so obvious, the board has to... No conflict of interest in those industry members or bias. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Juno Un, for your testimony. Next, we have Wes Cassidy. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. One more thing.
Yes.
The frequency of meeting, I've been serving other board too, but with all the respect due to the manpower, the administration's problem or issue might have, but especially the banking and insurances, not a two or the one board controlled the banking insurance matter. This is very critically important to protect the public side, and there's lots of matters coming out every day and every month. So one so-called have a board meeting to look over or to discuss the subject matter. I don't think so is enough. For example, we had a typhoon last year, and after that, we had only one board meeting to address, but we did not even address the issue of the typhoon. And about 78% of typhoon victims has not been paid by insurance company or whatever region behind. So I think this board has issue or the task to look over, discuss to help the people for the insurance and banking matter, we should have the frequent meeting then quarterly.
Did you say that the frequency?
Yeah. Because it has to be changed from quarterly to monthly because we have not too many things and a lot of things has to be discussed and look over and regulating insurance and banking industry.
Okay.
Quarterly is not going to be enough at all.
Okay. And do you have a list of things that, issues that would require monthly meetings?
Yes, we should have a lot of things. For example, like I said, the insurance rate, the bank, the changes, the interest change every single time, even this morning, FOMC has been changed the rate, how we can affect our loan mortgage rate to the bank, and if they follow the FOMC's regulation or not. For example, like I said, typhoon again, more than one and a half years has not been resolved yet. And then like I said, almost 80% victim has not been paid back. And insurance company does not follow the process or procedure by the policy, so no one can control except if the board does not do it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Yun. Well, I'll ask questions a little later. I want to give Mr. Cassidy at this time, a time to provide his testimony, and then I can open up for questions. Thank you so much for your testimony. So, Mr. Cassidy, you are recognized for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you for making the time today.
Have a day. I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the testimony that I'm going to be submitting, and then I'd like to make some comments after. My name is Wes Cassidy, and I am the General Manager and President of Pacific Indemnity Insurance Company, a locally incorporated domestic insurance company. I'm also a sitting member of the Banking and Insurance Board. I'd like to start by saying how grateful I am for the legislature's approval of my appointment to this position as recognition of the value my experience in the local industry brings to the board. I am confident in saying that my fellow board members from both banking and insurance industries were approved for this reason as well. Thank you for allowing me the chance to share my opinions on Bill 370, which with regard to the board, number one, creates a list of certain regulatory responsibilities, and two, restricts the number of mandated representatives from the regulated industries of banking and insurance. It is my strong opinion that these proposed changes may come in the way of how the board is to fulfill its responsibilities as outlined in 11 GCA Chapter 103, its enabling legislation. Bill 370 proposes the following. The board's regulatory responsibilities should be centered on key areas, including, but not limited to, one, Community Reinvestment Act, two, insurance agent conduct, three, adequate and proper disclosure for both banking and insurance contracts, four, licensing, admission, departure of banks and insurance agencies, five, chartering of banks, credit unions, and domestic insurers, six, approval of insurance rates, and seven, timely processing of insurance claims. Not only are these responsibilities already within the regulatory scope of the Commissioner on Banking and Insurance and the Regulatory Division of the Department of Revenue and Taxation, but assignment of these would contradict the intended purpose of the board. I must point out that the purpose of the board is not to oversee the two industries, but instead provide guidance in order to implement by regulation provisions of the insurance and banking laws and to define terms in order to facilitate the administration of those laws. In other words, the responsibility of the board is not to actually regulate, but instead is to assist the Commissioner with advice in order to ensure proper and legal regulation of the banking and insurance industries. Therefore, because the board is advisory in function, the level of technical advice is critical. The required composition of the board is outlined in 11 GCA 103, 103, which is the Banking and Insurance Board, accomplishes this by requiring, in addition to three other members of the public, three members be executive officers of locally chartered banks and three members be executive officers of local insurance businesses. Currently, because representatives from the two industries, myself included, possess strong local experience in our fields, I feel strongly we are able to fulfill our responsibility as advisors effectively. The foremost responsibility of the Banking and Insurance Commissioner is to enforce regulatory compliance of the two industries for the purpose of ensuring continued public protection while ensuring their long-term viability and availability on Guam. The present composition of the board definitely serves to keep this balance in place. Since Bill 370 also calls for the lowering of the number of members specific to banking and insurance from three to one, there could be a very good possibility that the Commissioner would lose the ability to formally rely on the technical expertise of local bankers and insurance, making the continued regulation of the industries more difficult while protecting the public's interest. I think the present board functions exactly as intended. Any change would be unnecessary. Respectfully, Wes Cassidy. Thank you. And so I think it's important to understand clearly that the board, that the Banking and Insurance Board is purely advisory. We are not a regulatory body, nor should we profess to be a regulatory body. Should we be a regulatory body, as suggested in this legislation? That's where conflicts of interest would exist. I think if we're able to contribute our expertise and our knowledge of the local industries, we can assist with proper regulation. I want to also make it clear that all of these listed responsibilities, proposed listed responsibilities, it's my understanding that in practice, each one of these is well within the scope of responsibilities within the regulatory authority. If there is a problem or an issue that an individual insured has... If there is a problem or an issue that an individual insured has, the proper procedure is to file a complaint with the Commissioner's office. Now, in every other jurisdiction in the United States, a very significant role for the insurance commissioner is to listen to these complaints and to take them seriously and investigate them and to find out if there is a problem, particularly if it's systemic financially. And so, if an insured does not, if an insured is not satisfied with the performance of their insurance company, there's a direct avenue to the Commissioner's office in order, in order for a complaint to be made. And as such, that would be the first step to go. Now, the way I think that this should function is that if the Commissioner is not or fails to act on any particular complaint, at that point, the board would serve in its advisory capacity to make sure that that honoring or that investigation of that complaint would occur. And so, there are all of these means and steps in place, and it was designed very well and it seems to perform and function very well right now. Yes, it is the case that there are some insurance companies that have yet to complete one hundred percent of their typhoon Mawar claims, but that's not the case with all insurance companies. But there are mechanisms in place to make sure that there are, that those types of complaints can be heard. And those complaints may not be limited to just claims performance, they can be, they can be for any reason at all whatsoever. And so, with that, I definitely think that items, look, looking into the proposed legislation, I can see what concerns might be motivated by an interested party. And guessing what they might be, I can assure you that each one of these concerns would be addressed within the existing structure of the regulatory framework at the Department of Revenue and Taxation. And so, I think that the existing, that the existing statute that empowers the board, that it, I'm sorry, that enabled the board and empowers the Commissioner is functioning exactly the way it's intended. And I definitely, as a member of the insurance industry, I would understand very clearly if that was not the case. I know that very quickly. And I, and mind you, I'm only speaking of my industry. But, but I'm sure that my fellow members of the board would agree that this board is performing the way it's supposed to. To try to get the board to, to meet monthly, to go through these suggested items, I think would, one, be absolutely against what the intention of the board was in the first place. And number two, I think it would also be almost getting in the way of the regulatory authority in doing their jobs. It's not our jobs to regulate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for all your testimony. So I guess, one of the issues is like, you know, as Mr. Yun said, that there is, it took a year or longer for claims to be resolved, or if it hasn't been resolved at this point too. And so, I think, and of course, hearing other concerns out in the community, I guess there's just this general perception that the Banking Insurance Commission is inaccessible to the public for these complaints. So I think that's one issue that needs to be addressed, you know, whether it's this bill or some other administrative change, right? And so, the, the other issue too of the quarterly meeting, should there be a lack of quorum in one quarterly meeting, then we're looking at six months, right? Six months when the next, you know, definitely a longer period of, of meeting time. And so, maybe if any of you can, maybe I guess Commissioner, can you, I mean, I guess, how can the Banking and Insurance Commission become more responsive to consumer issues that arise? Because like, you know, it's, you know, I don't know if everybody knows, but a year waiting for a claim, is that liable for fines? You know, should a company be fined for waiting, for, for consumers to wait that long?
I, I don't believe there's anything in law that allows for fines. But like Wes said, there's a process, the complaint process. Anybody can file a complaint with the Insurance Commissioner and we investigate it. With respect to typhoon Mawar, we were getting complaints about late payments and not paying claims. So we asked for all the insurance companies to provide a report listing the total number of claims, those, those claims that were settled and those that have yet to be settled. As of our meeting, as of our last meeting with Alice, there was only one insurance company that, that had to get back to us. But most, almost all of the insurance companies that we asked to report did report. And most of them, their claims were settled. It's just one that did not and Alice was already working with them. So she, I believe by the end of this week, she, she, she would have had a, a report on, you know, their status. So with respect to typhoon Mawar, we did, you know, reach out to the insurance companies to get a report on their, on the claims. There's, to me, there's just one problem insurance company.
Sorry.
There we go.
Okay. Sorry, I think Juno was, Wes, if you don't mind, Juno was, I think he was ready to.
I could say that the typhoon Mawar case is just one of examples, it's not the fundamental issue. And the Commissioner said one company, but that company has the, the number one market share in the Guam insurance industry. A lot of insurance has been filed to the Commissioner's office long time already, has not been processed clearly yet. But that's not a big deal. But Mr. Cassidy keeps saying that the Insurance Board is not regulatory, or not overseeing, is not, and only the advisory. But the law clearly say Guam Banking Insurance Board plays a crucial role in regulating and oversee the banking insurance industries on the island. And the key responsibility is regulation oversight is number one. The board ensure that banks and insurance companies operating in Guam comply with the local regulation, including licensing, monitoring, financial stability, ethical practice. Two, consumer protection, they work to protect consumer by ensuring the financial insurance companies operating fairly and transparently, policy development. So from the beginning to all the way, Insurance Board state in law clearly oversight and regulating insurance industry and banking insurance industry. And initially, the, Mr. Cassidy said, their task of the board, the rate regulations, yes. But if the board was fulfilled by insurance industry or banking insurance in that company, how the board can control or regulate opposite against those members? They have, like I said, it's more than conflict of interest, it's completely biased.
Well, you know, that's exactly why I say the board should not be in a regulatory position.
Yeah, I need to recognize people, so, okay, Mr. Cassidy.
You know, the thing is, you know, I might not be a lawyer, nor, nor a CPA, and, but I do, I can read statutes and I do understand statutes that relate to my industry. And I do understand very clearly, particularly because I do serve on this board and I have served on this board for quite some time. And I'm very confident when it says right here under 103 104, powers of the board and Commissioner, it says very clearly, "We are only authorized to regulate our own procedures and practices in accordance with Administrative Adjudication Act." It doesn't say we're here to regulate the industry. It further says, "We are, we are to implement by regulation, not consistent with law, any provision of this title, and to define any term not defined in this title as may be reasonably necessary or appropriate for the administration of this title and other laws of Guam related to banking and insurance." So what that means is that we're here to support the Commissioner. What we're not supposed to be doing is regulating. If we do regulate, I can definitely see conflicts of interest. Now, I want to make that very clear. And I think if, if it was a regulatory body, I don't think that you would have the level of experience participating on the board itself. We might have lawyers and, and CPAs such as yourself on the board, but we wouldn't have active members of the industries participating and contributing their expertise.
I understand, respect to Mr. Cassidy, but.
I recognize people, so at this point, we are not debating.
Oh, no, no.
It's basically about testimony about the bill, okay? And then, so I, I see that perhaps there could be a third option here. You know, I think that what's needed is more robust petitioning process and a timeline to respond to these claims. So I think that something that's more administrative, but, so yeah, I would have to look at this again to see the structure of this law, to see if it's advisory versus regulatory, right? And I know both of you have a different perspective on this.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? I don't know if this is the right venue for it, or maybe.
Sorry, let me just complete my thought if you don't mind, Mr. Cassidy. So, yeah, I think really what the point of this discussion is to try to address the, I guess, what's considered the delay, the delay of response for claims that haven't been resolved, right? And so apparently, I mean, I, it, you know, actually, I was also, you know, subject to this, the, the length of claim, claims being resolved. And I think this is something that the community who is not, who feel maybe left out of this discussion, I think it's important to have maybe that public outreach by the, by the Insurance and Commission to ensure that anybody that has issues with any of the claims of the insurance industry, you know, that, that the Commissioner is, is accessible. I think that's one of the issues is that accessibility. And considering that these meetings are quarterly versus, you know, more regular, it really kind of keeps many of the public, I guess, their ability to express their concerns with the issues.
Yes, ma'am, the photo record.
I'm sorry, Mr. Yun, I haven't recognized you. So this is, the question is for the Commissioner. What can be done to address, I mean, this I think is the, the bottom, the, the heart of the issue, is accessibility.
Accessibility to the board or, or accessibility to me?
To you, yeah.
I'm in my office all the time. Anybody that comes in, I see them. Even if it's not an insurance and banking matter, I see them. The director's not around or the deputy, I see them. You know, and then I report the issue to whomever that's supposed to handle it. But I'm always around. If I'm not around, I'm off island. The other thing is, we've had board meetings and the board meetings are announced, but we never get a public, anybody from the public attending. Now, in, in my time, they've never, never showed up to complain or, you know, address the board. But our meetings are publicized, you know, and, and as per law. And I'm always in my office and I always see everybody who's there, who wants to see me, I'm always there. So I, I don't know where that's coming from, but we can, you know, research it and see, you know, if, if maybe public service announcements would, you know, just letting people know what the law is and that you can come in and complain. I, I don't know what else to do other than, but yes, we're open to, to reaching out even more.
Okay, so one of the things about composition is maybe increasing public representation. So I know we have a third is, you know, basically we have a lawyer and a government classified employee. You know, what are your thoughts about maybe more of the general public being represented in that board?
That's okay, as long as, I mean, I think maybe my thought would be on that is that we're gonna be spending our time educating them, you know, on insurance and banking.
But they're also the conduit for any issues that the community is experiencing. So I mean, that, that's really the purpose is to, you know, a representative.
But we get the complaints, we get the complaints, we, we research the complaints so we know what the, the public is, is experiencing in both industries, in banking, in, in insurance as well.
So how many complaints are you getting on a regular basis?
That figure I didn't, I don't know. I didn't research that. But we get the, we get the complaints, you know, Alice informs me and then I get the complaints and I funnel it down to her because they have to be investigated.
Okay.
And we find that when the Insurance Commissioner is investigating or the Banking Insurance Commissioner is investigating, it moves things along. I mean, it would go faster because we're looking into it, we're asking the questions.
And do you have a budget for public outreach and education?
No, it's combined with, we recently hired, Revenue Tax recently hired a public information officer. And one of the things she's, she's going to do is improve our website. Because right now, our website is busy, it, it has all the areas of Revon Tax, which I've complained about. I would like the banking and insurance to be separate, you know, business license to be separate, the tax side to be separate, so that it's not confusing to the consumer. They can, you know, look up stuff without having to navigate so much. So that's one of the plans. Also, you know, the public service announcements, we're working with our public information officer. And I, I can say she's very good, she's very aggressive. And so we expect, you know, changes and for the better, in my opinion. So we're working on it slowly, but you know, we're a big department and we have various divisions. So it's not always insurance and banking that comes first, you know, we have to wait in line. But we get in there and we, we ask for things and we're working on it slowly but surely.
Okay, so yeah, I want to come, I guess, I guess I'm not as comfortable moving away from this discussion without really having, I guess maybe we have to discuss some more, but really having a plan for accessibility. Accessibility and responsiveness to claims. I think that's something that's really critical, whether we can address it by statute or administratively. I think that's something that needs to happen. Also, educational outreach is really critical. Because yeah, we have people in our community that have waited for a long time and, you know.
Okay, wow.
So, and may, may not have even, you know, lodged a complaint, not knowing that there is a place to complain. And so we really need to have that outreach by, by the Banking Insurance Commission. So I, I don't want this to be a debate. I know there, there's like back and forth, so.
Not a debate. I'd like to just make a one simple, more simplistic one.
Sorry, I missed you, okay. I don't know who raised their hand first. I think it was Mr. Cassidy at this point, yeah.
I'd like to actually make a suggestion. And what I'm hoping is that this might kind of help facilitate this process within the existing framework. Now, the board, the board does have a, an agenda that we receive. And if we can make sure that a permanent item on that, on that agenda is to ensure that the Commissioner is tracking these complaints and the complaints are being addressed. I don't think the board should be going through specifically what those complaints are, but we need to make sure that the Commissioner is acting on those complaints. Now, it's very simple to be able to just look, or very easy to look at typhoon as being the big issue. But let's not forget the life, I mean, health insurance is part of the regulatory framework as well. And there are significantly more claims within the health insurance environment than there are in the property and casualty insurance environment. And so that could be something that administratively would be a very difficult thing to actively report on, for instance. But not impossible. I think that it should be a matter in front of the board to ensure that something like that, if it's, if it's that important to the public, should be tracked and monitored. And I think it would also be very simple to open a portal within the, within the Revon Tax website. It's a very user-friendly website. I mean, I, I renewed my registration on there pretty quick and I think it would be very simple to add on some sort of little feature. simple to add on some sort of little feature that would be a direct way for the public to file complaints.
Mr. Yun, you're recognized.
And like I said, I don't like the root issue with Typhoon Mauwarr, just for the record, and I and my, our company has no issue with the claim at all, because I filed the Korean SEC, so they haven't responded, and they've been processed. So, I personally, my company has no issue with the claim at all. But I know a lot of insurance has not been, and they've been asking me, but because I'm the Board of Members, so I cannot say, I cannot help you unless we have a meeting. Even they filed a complaint, and Board tried, Commissioner's Office trying to ask them to get information from the insurance company, and also they have a special Board meeting. That's what I heard from the complaint files, but we have no special Board meeting.
Sorry, you're saying there's a special Board meeting?
No, no. The insured, the public ask for special Board meeting, or they'd like to have a meeting with us, but I can't, so they filed complaint to the Commissioner's Office, but we are not acting on it yet, like I said. It's not my cases. So, like Senator and others say, we should have the way to, if it's not oversight or regulated, we have to have some access and a frequent meeting or a frequent, proper way to respond to the public need. And second, like Commissioners say, the website and SNS other, the capability, always lack of manpower cannot address the issue, so we need more manpower or a budget. At least SNS or home, the website has to be separate to communicate better with the public. That's my suggestion.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yes, so I would definitely like to follow up with this topic, and Commissioner, are you, can you call meetings more than quarterly?
Yes, but I've never had a request to call a meeting. There's never been a request for a special Board meeting. I don't call a meeting unless there's something to discuss. I don't want to waste people's time. Lot of times, it's on my end that we have to investigate or present or handle before it goes to the Board or is reported to the Board, but I always report to the Board.
Thank you. So, there are currently administrative fixes for this, to ensure that there is responsiveness to concerns, and you can call special meetings on top of the quarterly meetings. So, it doesn't have to be monthly, but as needed in between the quarters. Okay. Right, is there anyone else who'd like to present? I know we have a banking representative here. Would you like to, or you're just here for observational purposes, Mr. Banis? Observation, okay. Okay, great. So, thank you for this discussion. I know, you know, it's important to have a public accessibility to these commissions, which provides so much, it has a lot of impact, as you know, and we definitely want to have more responsive commission to make sure the needs are met. And also, this really hearing is to even publicize the Commissioner's role, and for those that need to make complaints that are not satisfied with the response of their company, insurance companies or others, you know, the Commissioner is available to the public to receive complaints. And now, we know that, you know, there's going to be a responsiveness at this point, and hopefully, we have more educational outreach for the public. So, for all the, all the public out there, please note that you can call the Commissioner for any complaints that you have, you're unsatisfied with anything regarding their oversights, or her oversight, that is. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to provide additional testimony at this time? Okay, thank you so much for your participation today and highlighting a very important issue. So, seeing that there are no further testimony or comments on Bill 370-37, this bill has been duly heard. The Committee will continue to receive written testimony until November 15, 4:00 p.m. Please address all testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chair President of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor, Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning, which can be dropped off the mailboxes at the Guam Congress Building or email to office@senatorparas.org. So, thank you so much, and you have a good day, and we'll look forward to further developments on this. Thank you. Thank you so much. So, this time, we're going to recess. We have our last item is to hear testimony on the executive reappointment of Candy C. Okahama, but we are going to recess until 4:00 p.m. for that. Thank you so much.